Welcome to the, welcome to. Okay, thank you. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of October 31st, 2016. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the chambers. Today we have a special presentation to begin, so welcome Mayor Byler.
Thank you. You all are looking good today. I have to say, I'm feeling somewhat unimaginative. All I did was pick out the new tie. Thank you again for having us before you for this monthly award. This is the Mayor's Award of Excellence for September. It's being presented to a team of police officers who all serve as school resource officers, SROs as they call them, at Lincoln's Public High Schools. Captain Janelle Moore nominated them in the categories of customer relations and productivity for their work on a two-day youth police academy. The officers are seated here in the second row and include Joseph Fisher and Nate Hill, Shane Jensen, Alan Pickering, Megan Schreiner, and Thomas Stumbo, and we'll identify them individually to you here in a moment. The SRO Police Academy Clubs were established in all six public high schools back in 2013. The clubs introduce interested students to various aspects of the law enforcement profession. The students participate in group explorations, in discussions, and hands-on activities of various types. In January, the SROs decided to expand the program by offering a two-day youth police academy at Southeast Community College in May. The team recruited 35 participants, ages 14 to 18. They collaborated with the Lincoln Police Union for monetary support, Chick-fil-A, Supertarget, and two retired police officers also donated services or provided financial support. The program included a welcome from Police Chief Jeff Blimeister, presentations of LPD's organizational structure, described how to become a police officer, and described some of the equipment like tasers, as well as having canine demonstrations. The students also participated in practical exercises in math lab attire, evidence handling, crime scene evidence recovery, emergency vehicle operation, radar device operation, and motor vehicle traffic stops. And they also learned about the interviewing and interrogation of suspects and victims. The students participated in real-life scenarios involving crimes in process, building searches, and handcuffing techniques. Student evaluations completed at the end of the academy were very positive. "Cops aren't the way they are on television," for one. "I'm learning both about the day-to-day job and how I can become more attentive and helpful as a citizen," said another. And a third one said, "One-on-one contact with different police officers was much appreciated." Captain Moore wrote, "In review, the SRO's two-day efforts fulfilled each of the established program goals, as well as relating positively to a segment of Lincoln's youth population." So, it's my pleasure to present the award to these individuals, and as I say your name, would you please come forward? First of all, Thomas Stumbo. Shane Jensen? Joseph Fisher? Nate Hill? And Megan Schreiner. I know that Police Chief Blimeister would like to say a few words, and congratulations to the team, if he may.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for recognizing outstanding work of these individuals. I was brand-new when the youth academy started and had an opportunity to come out and just make a few opening remarks. But so important, when I'm out in the community, and I'm sure that many of you, when you're out in the community, we continue to talk about how can we have positive interactions with the youth that will eventually lead them to have positive interactions in their adult lives, and also be able to look for a career in law enforcement. And the work that all of these individuals do every single day in a population that is over 1,000, when you consider the kids and the student, or the administration and the teachers, it's just, it's incredible work. And then you combine that with the youth academy, the logistics that goes along with that, and a strong partnership with our Training and Personnel Unit to make all this happen. But they did great work and continue to do that, and I'm very thankful to be part of this organization and see their work firsthand. Good job. Anybody want to say anything?
When each of you speak, could we, would you say which high school you're at, too, please?
Yes, sir. Hi, I'm Officer Shane Jensen. I'm with the North Star High School. On behalf of all of us, I'd like to thank the Mayor and the City Council for this award. It was very much a team effort, and I want to thank everyone that contributed to the success of this program. It took more than just us, and there were a lot of people that played a big part in making this successful for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The council usually likes to have you introduce your spouse or family if they're here and you'd like to.
Please do.
Officer Shane Jensen. I'm accompanied here by my wife, Michelle. Thank you.
My wife back there, I'm Al Pickering. I'm at Lincoln East.
I'm Joe Fisher. I'm at Southwest High School, and my wife Emily's over here.
Any others with family?
Call at once now.
Well, they have a high school, though.
Yeah.
I'm Tom Stumbo. I'm at Southeast High School.
I'm Nate Hill. I'm at Northeast High School.
I'm Megan Schreiner. I'm at Lincoln High.
All right. As they exit the chamber, I'll just go over the order of business of the City Council. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those who are opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition to that particular item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker, and as a reminder, a alarm will sound after four minutes. And after all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions on all items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, with the exception of this month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Agendas are outside the entrance to chambers. Parking passes are available if the gate is down today. And will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Certainly. First, we would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address, and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items 1 through 16.
Would anyone wish to speak on any of these items? All right, seeing none, please call the next item.
All right. If not, we can vote on these items. Items 1 through 6 were introduced by Lamb.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gayle Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items 17 and 18 together. They're the application of Culinary Underground for a Class C liquor license at 728 Q Street, Suite B, and the related manager application of Nick Fraley.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Please come, come forward. Go ahead and state your name and address, and then you can sign in when you're done with your testimony, please.
Nick Fraley, 13051 North Fortieth, Davie, Nebraska.
Okay. Can you raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about your application?
We're just looking to open a new space on the Haymarket for events and limited-bar offering.
Okay. Any questions from the council? All right. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Seeing none, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right. Next is item 19, application of Latisha Martinez and Manuel Alvarez-Castrita, doing business as Tia Letty's Restaurant for a Class I liquor license at 2701 North 27th Street.
Greetings.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon and happy Halloween. I feel underdressed. I'm really enjoying that, and I'm very coveted of that stuffed animal. Well, my name's Lisa Lozano, 5533 South 27th Street, Suite 203, Lincoln, Nebraska, and I'm the attorney for Latisha Martinez and Manuel Alvarez-Castrita, who are both here today. And I'm representing them in the request for a liquor license. They've had this restaurant open for the past two and a half years, and it's near 27th and Cornhusker. And if you don't know anything about them, you know that she's from, she's from El Salvador, and he's from Mexico. And so the neat thing about this restaurant is it gives people who are familiar with Mexican food something familiar that they can try. But if they want to be a little more adventurous, they can have Salvadoran food. And the number-one thing that El Salvadorans eat is pupusas. And if you haven't had a pupusa, you need to get in your car, and you need to drive over there, and you need to have one, because they're delicious. And they've had this restaurant for about two and a half years, and this is just a way of kind of expanding their offerings to their clientele. Latisha's had two prior liquor licenses, one under Restaurante and Pupusaria El Salvador, and then that restaurant eventually did close, but with no violations, no problems. She then had another restaurant called Cafe El Salvador. Once again, no, no problems, no citations. And so, this is just a continuation of her being a restaurateur and wanting to offer more. And so, we are hoping that this will be approved.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much.
Happy Halloween to you, too. All right. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Seeing none, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right. Next is item 20, manager application of Karen Gray for Dan Mac Inc., doing business as formerly known as The Keg. It's now known as Gray's Keg Saloon at 104 North 20th Street. Did you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Welcome. Can you please state your name and address for us?
Karen Gray, 2320 West Laguna Road, Lincoln.
Okay. Thank you. Can you tell us a little bit about your application?
Yeah. We are the new, I'm one of the new owners of The Keg, Gray's Keg Saloon. We have changed the format to more of a live music venue type of environment, trying to support local live music. Just a nice, happy little bar.
Great. Any questions from council? Okay. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right. Seeing none, Teresa, can you please call the next item?
Yes. Next would be item 21, manager application of Ryan Rosenstiel for Small Town Bar Inc., doing business as Rosie Sports Bar and Grill at 1501 Center Park Road, number 300. We did have a request of the applicant to delay public hearing in action for one week, too, November 7th, but if someone wants to come forward and testify, they sure can.
Would anyone like to speak to this item? Please do come forward now if you'd like to. All right. Please call the next item, Teresa.
Madam Chair, I would move approval of items 17 through 20.
Second.
Moved by John and seconded by Roy. Discussion? Please call the roll. Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gayle Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Oh, I would so move we delay item 21 until next week.
Second.
Move, delay moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll. Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gayle Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, are our public hearing resolutions. Item 22, amending the Lincoln-Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Regulations and Standards, Article 1, Section 6, to increase fees for required services to business and industry.
Good afternoon. Judy Hallstead, Lincoln-Lancaster County Health Department. I wanted not to take a lot of your time today, but I do want to do just a couple of general discussion and general reminders. As you are aware, when we brought the biennium budget forward for the Health Department, we did include our environmental fees. So, you already approved fees for water and wastewater, our food establishment fees. I did not bring forward, and I mentioned to you at that time, that I did not bring forward the air quality fees, because we wanted to bring our changes forward as a package. So, I'm bringing forward to you today, two years' worth, to cover this biennium of our air quality program changes. They are not significant in that the fee increases are approximately 3% for our fees, as was the case with our other environmental fees. I do want to let you know, we do have one policy change in that for those 90 to 95 sources that pay based on how much they emit, we had previously had 0 to 500 tons, 500 tons to 1,000 tons, and then over 1,000 tons. The policy change is because we've only had, we only have one source in this jurisdiction, which is both Lincoln and Lancaster County, that is Nebraska Public Power District Coal Fire Plant at Hallam, at Sheldon Station, that we actually are changing the over 1,000 tons to just define that as Sheldon Station. We have changed that also to be a flat fee, instead of a specific fee based on emissions, because their emissions have fluctuated, and we anticipate, as they move forward with their partnership with Monolith, that they will continue to fluctuate. And so that they can plan, and so that we can plan, we are establishing a flat fee. And that flat fee is $500,000 for the 2016 emissions, and $500,000 for the 2017 emissions, each payable the following spring. And NPPD is aware of this change. Actually, we do have three representatives from Nebraska Public Power District here. Joe Sitta will be speaking following me. He came down from Columbus today, and I appreciate his willingness to take the time to travel and to be here to speak to this item today. But we really believe that this helps maintain the stability of our local program over the next couple of years of change. And as a reminder, there are no city taxpayer dollars that go into the air quality program. There's no county taxpayer dollars. This is a business that obviously is in the county's jurisdiction. So, not only do you have to approve these fee changes today, but it is also on the county board's agenda to approve these same fee changes tomorrow morning at 9:00. So, I've had a chance, I think, to meet with each of you and to have a little bit of a conversation with you. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, or if you would just like to hear from NPPD, that's fine as well. So, you just tell me your preference.
Any questions for Judy?
I think as a courtesy, if the NPPD representative here, we ought to have him come forward and...
Absolutely. We'd love to.
Quite a commitment.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello. Good afternoon. Thanks for having us. My name is Joe Sitta. I'm the Corporate Environmental Manager with Nebraska Public Power District. My address is 1414 15th Street, Columbus, Nebraska. By the way, I have two folks with me I want to introduce. Chris Servini, he's the plant manager at Sheldon Station, and Jason Vanick. Jason is an environmental engineer on our staff that does all our air permitting. Just wanted to come, and first of all, in the spirit of public power, we are a strong supporter and advocate for local control. And I think working with the Health Department on our permits and our air permits and emissions is a, is a good, strong example of local control. We know their people. They know our plant and processes very well, and so we look forward to the continued relationship. Like, like was mentioned earlier, our, it's hard to predict the power market and what we're going to be doing fluctuating up and down with our emissions. And so, you know, we've got ranges of emission fees that can, can be very low to very high. And so, actually, having a set fee helps with our budgeting stability, and I believe in working with Judy, it also helps with their budgeting stability. So, we do support this, this, this change and this $500,000 per year for the next two years.
Okay. John and Carl?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Sitta, for coming forward, and then also for NPPD to agree to this, because I know that with the fluctuations and some of the changes in the market, as you noted, as well as elements that are going on at the Hallam Plant, that it's, it's quite a step on the...
Yes, it is.
And we really appreciate that, because it helps the quality of the program continuing. So, thank you and your colleagues very much for your agreement to this, and your board.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
Carl?
Yes. Mr. Sitta, could you talk to us a little bit about the changes that are going to happen at the Sheldon Plant?
Oh, certainly. There's a, you've probably heard, there's an organization or a private entity by the name of Monolith. They're going to produce a compound called Carbon Black. Now, this is an innovative, new way. Typically, in the past, it's been done with using heavy oil, and it's a very high-emission type of process. This process is going to use energy from us, electricity. So, they'll be buying electricity from us, or actually from the local producer, our local supplier. And then they'll be, in an oxygen-deficient area, they'll be splitting the hydrogen and creating a pure form of carbon dust, and then the byproduct is methane. And there's no emissions from their process. We will be purchasing the methane, excuse me, hydrogen. I'm sorry, hydrogen. I was working with some other folks on methane, but on, we're purchasing the hydrogen, which is, you know, is a very clean fuel, and we'll be converting our unit number one to, from coal to hydrogen. And so, this is, so we'll be reducing our emissions from the coal plant and go to very clean emissions from hydrogen. And it's kind of a win-win for both of us, and with them coming in. I know they're going to employ a lot of people in the area. You've probably seen some of the, the information, but it's, we're excited about the process.
Just a follow-up. So, your emissions, then, will be reduced as a part of this project?
Yes. Yes, significantly.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Cindy?
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Siffa. Thank you very much for coming out today. I appreciate the long trip that you made. And I just wanted to let you know that I appreciate your commitment to local control and to running more efficient business that reduces our emissions. Thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you. We look forward to it also.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right. Any more staff questions? Actually, gee, I have one question. You've mentioned that, that the, the fees paid previously had fluctuated quite a bit. Can you, can you give us a sense of what you mean by that, through the range of their payments in the past?
Sure. The range of fees specifically for NPPD, and part of the reason that we established the, the dollar amount that we did is because they have, have ranged anywhere from approximately, in the last five years, approximately $400,000 up to $700,000 in fees that they've paid. Most recently, it was $544,000, but averaging over the last five years, it's right at about $500,000. And so, we felt like that was a fair number to, to land on. During this past year, because they are obviously making some changes, and because of being part of the Southwest Power Pool, they've had some reductions in those emissions. We won't know totally what those are until the end of 2016, because the emission year is the calendar year, not the fiscal year. But their reductions have been a significant reduction this year, probably in the neighborhood of a 60% reduction.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Judy?
Yes.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you please call the next item, Teresa?
Yes. The next item is item 23, accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of October 1st through the 15th, 2016.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak about a claim? Okay. Don't believe we have anyone here. Jeff, there is a motion to amend that's being added. Could you mind just clarifying what that is for us?
Hello. Jeff Propatrick, City Attorney. The resolution that's before you is rather short. It only has one claim denied and one where we were requesting payment. But as, after the resolution was, was sent out, we found out some more information about the one claim that we had recommended paying. And so, we'd like to, the amendment is to basically pull that back, and so we can further clarify who is at fault in that case. Not a matter of trying to make the homeowner whole. It's a matter of who actually ruptured the line.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Carl?
Just to clarify, so you aren't saying denied. It's just still pending?
Exactly, which is pulling that off of this resolution.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Since no one's here to speak to a claim, can you take us to the next item, Teresa?
Yes. Next is item 24, approving the labor contract between the city and Lincoln City Employees Association, LCEA, for a term effective August 11th, 2016, through August 31st, 2018.
Good afternoon, council. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. These labor agreement we bring before you is a two-year agreement with LCEA, Lincoln City Employees Association. Wages, highlights for the agreement, wages for the first year, 2.5%, the first year, and 2.4% in the second year. We have successfully decreased the eligibility for longevity to be effective in the second year. We had, let's see, seven classifications, limited to 14 people, that were increased in pay ranges through negotiations. We did make some adjustments in the contributions for single and family health contributions. One, one went down, one went up. We also made some changes in the plan design for the maximum out-of-pockets. Probably most noteworthy in this contract is comp time was extended to non-exempt personnel. Comp time is when someone works overtime, that time and a half. They can then put that into a bank and use it as paid time off later.
Okay. Any questions for John?
Yeah. Yes, Mr. McDaniel, you mentioned the changes in the health plans, or what's been contributed there by both the city and the employees. does this affect that or not affect that?
Well, the deadline for the ACA Cadillac excise tax was extended. The actual date escapes me at this point in time, so I've not done a recent analysis, John, on that.
Recall how far it was extended?
But it was extended by two years. In this plan, we were within the limits. We had no exposure.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Doug? Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
Excuse me. I've got people there. Go right ahead. And I'm not throwing any names and you guys got them. What this is? This here is a union ironworker. And guess what? You don't work without us. And we don't have to have you, but you have to have us because you don't fly any iron without us in that cranes. And you can't put anybody up there. So if you can't come on my job and pass a piss test, you best get off my job. Jeff, I'm not going to attack you because you know you've lost a baby, but you owe Stephanie Hope some money. You, when you address me from now on, it's Mrs. Hellcat. You got that? See this bag right here? This man right here? You guys have put this man through hell and back and he's not doing very well. You get a pass. You get a pass. You, when you came to my job site, you should have been speaking to me, not that scabs that you were speaking to. And I can't see. Is that Roy? Okay. Now, why did I take these off? Because I can't see. So the ones here, okay, are prescription and I don't want to see who you are. You, now, your pass just got given to the sheriff for the butt rub, you finally have it right. The most important thing right here is those babies. And they're going trick-or-treating tonight, aren't they? Are they coming to the Mrs. Hellcat? No, because she's going to be at the hospital with the husband. Now, you better understand, those boys that are coming in, they don't give a good goddamn who you are. They care about him. Who are you looking at? You're looking at the ice queen. Are you in the firemen? Is that what that is? Carl, yes or no? Yes or no?
Ms. Pope Gonzalez, please.
Nope, nope, nope. Listen!
Asking you not to raise your voice to the council members.
You know what?
We appreciate your testimony.
I'm so tired of you people that I can't see straight. I'm trying to save your life. You guys don't understand what you guys have done. Those ironworkers are also firemen. So Captain Dave Friedman met Mrs. Hellcat and it wasn't very nice. So no, Mrs. Gonzalez pays your wages. You don't pay mine. So we're going on to Roy, right? You got to get out of here because you've got babies. And we call you one-eyed Willie and it doesn't mean a pee-pee, okay? What it means is you have that patch. And we, our union ironworkers, we talk trash. So when you're doing sensitive training, if you can't be on the job, you put on your big-boy pants and you get out of here. Now, I'm done. And you know what? And you're looking like, I can't see you. So I'm hoping that you're the right one. Is your name Larian?
Yes.
Okay. Did you come to my job site? And it was a Sunday? Did you talk to me back on the job site? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Did you come to my house? No. Did you come to any of my neighbors' houses? No. Came to my job site. And you should have not done that. You saw, I pointed here and showed you exactly who we were and you didn't listen. I am getting out of here, but not because you're standing here, because this is the only man in here that I've got any respect for. Does he have to salute me? No. And my general pain in your ass is going to get worse. And you, honey, because you are more than welcome to have called and said, oh, she's... Because guess what? Those boys were going down to Ferguson. And you guys would have had a Ferguson if I hadn't been running interference. Your Black Life Matters, you want to know where I was? Running interference to make sure no Klan members were there. Now, I'm going to bill you double time. You two right there, you get hazard pay. You, you get paid only because I'm pointing, okay? Now, I'm getting out of here and guess where we're going? You are taking them babies, right? And do you care about the rest of these people? No, you don't. You, one-eyed Willie, we're real impressed with you. You, now, I have my glasses on.
Please, Ms. Gonzalez, asking you to refrain from calling the council members anything but their names.
You know what? I can't see them. Guess what? Let me tell you what you guys call me. Hellcat. This is Mrs. Hellcat. And do not call me a bitch. And don't say choke a bitch either. Because you have no idea, you have no idea what you've done. I'm leaving. But you have no idea what you've done.
Would anyone else like to testify?
I'm Deb Andrews, twelve thirty-five A Street. I'm opposed to the city negotiating with the unions. The labor contract between the City of Lincoln and Lincoln City Employees Association represents an unelected bureaucracy which controls revenue and spending. Taxes and fees increase to meet union demands. Unions are all interconnected and international. In nineteen ninety-seven, by unanimous vote, the union took the anti-communist clause out of the union constitution. Communism is inconsistent with the constitution of the state of Nebraska as well as the constitution of the United States. I urge you to begin the process of extricating the union from all divisions of local government.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right. Seeing none, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right. Next is item twenty-five, Resolution to Declare the Official Intent of the City to Reimburse Certain Expenses from the Proceeds of the City's Water Revenue Bonds for Expenditures Related to Improvements to the City's Water System.
Good afternoon. My name is Don Hirsch, your interim City Finance Director. As you recall, a week ago, I sent you a memo about some capital financing projects and refundings and included was a note about this reimbursement resolution. It's my understanding that the Public Works is planning on issuing their water revenue bonds this late spring or early summer in the amount of about twenty-five and a half million dollars, an amount that was included in your capital improvement program. The city typically will ask you to approve a reimbursement resolution in advance of the issuance of those debts. So if there are expenditures that occur that can be paid from bond proceeds, then we're able to do so. And typically, the city will fund a significant portion of their projects with cash and a portion with bond proceeds. And so this is just to cover the possibility that we may have expenses we want to pay with bond proceeds. So with that, I'll answer any questions. If there's specific project-related questions, I know the Public Works is here to help too.
Okay. Any questions? No question? No? Okay. Thank you. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Actually, do you want to have Public Works come up briefly and just speak to this?
Good afternoon and happy Halloween. I'm Donna Garden, Public Works and Utilities.
Donna, can you just take us through a couple of the major projects that will be paid for as a result of this initiative?
Yeah, probably the largest one is our fourth collector well. And we'll be finishing that in this year and hopefully it will be in service in March of two thousand eighteen. That's approximately eight to ten million dollars. That was in the CIP plan. We also have a new pump station going in southeast Lincoln. This is a very important pump station. It serves the area around eighty-fourth and Highway Two. And it's seen, that area's seen a lot of growth and it's definitely needed. We also have the water main improvement plan for the next two years that's funded by these bonds.
Can you speak a little more into the microphone?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any questions for Donna? Okay. Thanks for helping us understand how this water infrastructure improvements will be made. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right. Teresa, please call the next item.
All right. Next, our public hearing ordinance's second reading. Item twenty-six, Ordinance Authorizing and Providing for the Issuance of Not to Exceed Seventeen Million Five Hundred Dollar Aggregate Stated Principal Amount of General Obligation Highway Allocation Fund Pledge Refunding Bonds of the City.
Good afternoon again. Don Hirsch, interim City Finance Director. As I mentioned in my memo to you, we are continually looking for opportunities to save money when it comes to our outstanding bonds. Scott Keen from Emeritus kind of leads that effort. In November, we will have the opportunity to refund some water or some street construction bonds and I think save a fairly significant amount of money. And I guess at this point, maybe if I could ask Scott to just give you the latest on where we stand with that potential refunding, I'll turn it over to him. And Mike Rogers from Gilmore Bell is here if we've got questions specifically about the ordinance.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Using a conservative estimate of interest rates, we're looking at a little over two hundred thousand dollars a year of savings throughout the final maturity of the original two thousand six bonds. Without any plan to restructure or extend the amortization, just doing the refunding for interest rate savings results in present value savings of a little north of a million eight. So that represents a little more than ten percent of the outstanding bonds. The GFOA typically looks at a current refunding like this one that has savings of in excess of four percent being a good candidate. So clearly over ten percent, this is a very good candidate. These bonds don't become callable until next month, but we're moving as quickly as we can to get the documents off to the rating agencies. They actually have them in their hands now and plan to go to market with your approval the week after Thanksgiving.
Any questions? John?
Yes, Mr. Keen, could you just give us a rough idea of the current interest rate and what you're anticipating the new interest rate would be?
A conservative, we expect that today's market would have a rate of about one point eight percent. Our conservative estimate is based, the numbers that I just provided to you, assumed a rate of two percent. So rates could actually rise a bit between now and the end of the month. And we'd still be in a very good position to refund the bonds.
And they're currently at what percent, please?
They are outstanding at an average rate of four point one six percent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy.
Thank you. I have questions about the first bond that was, the maturity date of two thousand seventeen, the first bond. And so, it indicated there was a one point three million dollar principal amount left to pay. And what, and perhaps Mr. Hirsch knows this better than you, but my question is whether we have budgeted to pay that amount and whether we are still going to pay that amount prior to the issuance of these others.
Very good question. I think you're talking about the May twenty seventeen maturity of the two thousand six bonds and the amount of one point three million dollars, correct?
Correct.
Yes. The good news is the city, the revenues that are being used to repay these bonds and the city's outstanding two thousand twelve highway allocation bonds come from the payment of the gas taxes that you receive. Because you have such conservative financial management, actually September of every year, an amount sufficient to fund the debt service on these bonds is deposited into an account separate and apart from the construction funds, which is the other use of the highway allocation revenues. So the money is actually sitting there in the account right now. It has been, I defer to Don, I'm sure it's been budgeted for since it's in this fiscal year. And so there's going to be a cash contribution to the refunding of these bonds to downsize the refunding bond issue. Even though we have seventeen point four million dollars of bonds outstanding, we expect the financing to be more in the fourteen to fifteen million dollar range. Some amount of that comes from the original issue premiums that we would know that the market will be providing to us, but a big chunk of it comes from money, the cash that's already in hand with the city that's going to be used to help refund these bonds. So the bonds that are maturing, that are currently scheduled to mature, May of two thousand seventeen, won't get to their final maturity. They'll actually be redeemed with the rest of the bonds early in January, but the monies to pay those bonds are in the form of cash coming from the city.
Okay. So we'll have to borrow less in order to repay these bonds?
Correct.
Thank you.
Exactly right.
My other question was what date we're extending through because this shows the newest bond is maturity date of two thousand twenty-seven. Can you tell me what the new final maturity date will be?
Exactly the same. We're structuring this so that the final maturity will be the same, May fifteen of two thousand twenty-seven, and hopefully end up with a reduction of the debt service payments in each of those years, including that final year of a little more than two hundred thousand dollars.
And it looked to me like it costs about ninety-five thousand dollars for the bond origination. Is that correct?
That's a conservative estimate. Both the underwriters discount, by the way, again, the ordinance has this set up as we've done the prior refundings of the city with a negotiated sale with Emeritus. So there are two costs of issuance. One is the underwriters discount, which compensates Emeritus for the work that we do and the salespeople for selling the bonds. Then the other cost of issuance item, again, is a very conservative estimate of the rating agency fees, the bond council fees, and the trustee fees, paying, I'm sorry, paying agent fees.
And by conservative, you mean you don't expect to go over?
We don't think we'll get close to those numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? John?
Well, Mr. Keen, you beg the question to show just how good a job you do. Where do you think you realistically come in versus the ninety-five you've budgeted?
If we've got, the most recent update that I have is looking at about eighty-four thousand dollars. One of the things that we are recommending, that we are looking at, is the two rating agency fees for a financing of this size ought to end up in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range, but they changed their fees. It's a little hard to track exactly what their fees are. I don't want to put Mike Rogers on the spot with what he expects his fee to be for a financing like this, but I think it's probably pretty comparable to what other comparably sized general obligation issues have been in the past. So Mike, I'll let you sort of do the math for thirty-five thousand dollars.
Well, I...
Write yours yourself too.
Mike Rogers with Gilmore Bell Bond Council. I will admit, I didn't come prepared to talk about what our fee would be, so I'm not sure. But Scott's estimates are always high and so I can get back to you with what our fee estimate would be if you'd like, but I apologize for not having that information with me.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anything else you think we should be aware of with this particular set of...
No, just quickly, the ordinance authorizes the same security as the outstanding bonds, so it doesn't obligate the city anymore than what is currently obligated for. Also, the ordinance specifies that the final maturity can't be later than that May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-seven date, and the minimum savings must be four percent, which is the number Scott talked about as being the GFOA target. So those are the parameters that are being authorized by the, some of the parameters being authorized by the council today.
Okay. Thank you. Don, I have a question for you. I'm not sure if you already said this when you presented, but as I understand it, any of the savings achieved, roughly two hundred thousand a year, will then revert back to our street construction fund. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct. At the time, I'm assuming at the time the budget was prepared, we weren't sure if this would happen, exactly how much. So I doubt that it has been budgeted, but I'm sure that Public Works will find a good way to roll this into their future budgets.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone like to speak to this item? All right. Any other questions for staff? All right. Please call the next item, Teresa.
All right. Next is item twenty-seven, text amendment one six zero zero nine, amending chapter twenty-seven point sixty-nine of the Lincolnous Book Code relating to signs.
Do we have an applicant here? Don, I have a question for you. I'm not sure if you already said this when you presented, but as I understand it, any of the savings achieved, roughly $200,000 a year, will then revert back to our street construction fund. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct. At the time, I'm assuming at the time the budget was prepared, we weren't sure if this would happen, exactly how much. So I doubt that it has been budgeted, but I'm sure that Public Works will find a good way to roll this into their future budgets.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to speak to this item? All right. Any other questions for staff? All right, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right, next is item 27, text amendment 16009, amending chapter 27.69 of Lincoln Civil Code relating to signs.
Do we have an applicant here? David?
Happy Halloween. I'm here with the planning department.
Do you mind just give us the highlights?
Sure. This is a text amendment to the sign ordinance portion of our code. Really, this is applicable to places of religious assemblies, schools, and community playhouses. Currently, there's a, I would call it a limitation based on what we're proposing, but it's really just the way it's been where there was a required 200-foot separation for a 100-foot square-foot sign from the public road. This hasn't really been employed a lot. This particular proposal is really based on linking Christian School for a project. They are now, with an addition, actually closer than that, and they would like to be able to put a sign up on the wall. So what this proposal would do, and this would, the reason why we're in support of this is that it would be applicable to more than just where it would be allowed today. It would be, under current code, it would be only for AG and AGR zoning. Now it would be more based on, it would be based on the uses themselves, so it'd be more applicable citywide. So the change would be appropriate in that sense, and it would allow for a smaller sign, 50-square-foot sign at only 100 square foot, 100-foot distance. So we're decreasing the spacing requirement, but also decreasing the size of the sign that would be allowed. We feel like this would have much more applicability citywide, so it's an appropriate change, and it does help the project that's currently in for this consideration.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to speak to this item? All right, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right, next are items 28, 29, and 30. They are all related to the 48th and Layton redevelopment project. We have the redevelopment agreement, the fiscal year 1617 CIP to authorize and appropriate $5 million in TIF funds, and authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds.
Members of the council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, and the applicant in this case for these three items. I got the memo that the DSC directors would dress as ninjas today, and I clearly undershot the mark considerably.
You're a stealth ninja.
Thank you.
No one knows you are.
Good, all right. This project is one of those public-private partnerships, all of which we're proud of, but occasionally hits a home run in our estimation. And there are several ways in which that's true. One, this is a site specifically mentioned in the long-term comprehensive plan identified as a multi-use location, and it comes home to roost on all fours in this redevelopment agreement. It's an agreement that has 184 market-rate residential units, studios, one, two, and three bedrooms. This is not student housing as we've known it in the past, so it's not that, it's aimed at a much broader market than that. It's 28,000 square feet of first-floor commercial space, could be retail, could be office. There is a demolition of an existing building that you might be familiar with. Here's 48th Street, here's Layton. This is the building that will be coming down. This building, which now houses the Salvation Army, as I recall, and this strip mall remain, but this area is built with a new building here and another building there. In fact, the new site plan looks like this. This is where the existing building comes down and is replaced by a building, and a new building now takes the place of what is part of the Indian Ocean of concrete that surrounds the existing area. One of the ways that this is unique, besides fitting so very comfortably into our comprehensive plan designs, is the special way in which our partner in this, City Ventures, has conducted themselves. There are three ways that I think they've been very, very distinctive. First, they have made a great deal of effort to make sure that this project connects with the neighborhood in a couple of different ways. They will be building private streets that then connect with public streets, connecting, if you will, the neighborhood quite intimately then with this project. So the connectivity to the neighborhood, I think, is a positive, certainly for the developer, but for the city as well. A second way in which I think this project distinguishes itself is that the amount of green space and the attention to the use of green space is, again, a significant improvement, not only for this project, but I think the area as well. And the third way that I think the developer has distinguished themselves is maintaining a close, intimate, and early contact with the neighborhood. There have been multiple meetings. Council member Lamb has been to several of them, and I believe including the most recent one on September 15th that had about 15 members, 50 members of the neighborhood. And I think the reaction has been very, very positive for the neighborhood as they take what is there now and replace it with this kind of construction and this kind of development. The private investment by the developers, $30 million, the amount of TIF is authorized at $5 million, but that makes, it makes a difference as to whether or not a portion of the space will be commercial or residential. Residential is cheaper to build and therefore less investment, so you'll find in your notes that there's a $4.3 million number for TIF. There's also a $5 million number, and that's if commercial space is used in this project. And it's difficult for the developer to know that fact. They certainly have reached out to some commercial interests, one of which is in the healthcare field, but they are unable to make a decision early enough or quick enough that we can decide and know which of those two paths the developer will be taking. So what we've put in here is a limit at 4.3 if it's residential, and if it is commercial, it's authorized to go up to 5 upon first, it being commercial space, and secondly, obtaining the authorization of the mayor. That allows us to be flexible and respond to the needs of the developer so they can be successful, but at the same time putting appropriate caps and authorizing the use of the TIF for appropriate ways to spend the money, and they include site acquisition, site preparation, streetscape, landscape, and facade improvements. The developer's here. The demolition is expected to begin right away. The ground floor commercial is hopefully available in late 2017, and the apartments available in 2018. What questions can I answer?
Cindy.
I meant to catch you earlier and didn't catch you before our director's meeting was over, but I had a question about the tax allocation bonds, which I understand is what the TIF funding is, a TIF bond. But then when I was going through the records, I had, I know that we've approved some TIF projects since 2013, but I haven't seen the term tax allocation bond. When I looked in last year's or this year's budget summary, I didn't see it identified, anything identified since 2013. So have we been using a different name for that?
Mike Rogers will be coming up and answering that question.
Thank you. I have a feeling you guys anticipated my question. Thank you.
Again, Mike Rogers with Gilmore and Bell Bond Council. We have consistently used the term tax allocation bonds in the bond ordinances themselves. They're more commonly known as TIF bonds, and I think that's the term that is commonly used within the city. There's no statutorily prescribed name for the bonds when they're issued. And tax allocation bonds, the concept is, well, in the name of a bond issue, the idea is you give prospective investors or purchasers an idea of what the security is they're purchasing. And a tax allocation is an allocation of the increment to pay bondholders, and so that's just the term that's been used for a long time. I'm not sure when it originated or how, but it's been used consistently for a long time.
I understand that, and I appreciate that when I looked those up, I could see the project that they were used for. I just hadn't seen any issued since 2013, and it seems to me we've had issuance, issued some of TIF bonding since. So maybe we could talk about this later. I know we're not voting on this this week anyway, but I would like to visit with you about that further, if that would be okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have a question, and it might involve you, Mike, but it is with the TIF allocations. Because the amount that is being authorized and appropriated according to the language on our agenda today at $5 million, yet there may be there 4.35 million used if it's residential and 5 if it's commercial, what happens if you end up in a residential situation, but we've approved something that says you can appropriate $5 million? Where does the delta go? And is it collected? Is it refunded? How does that work?
The difference between 4.3 and 5 occurs in one and only one circumstance, and that's if you move from residential use to commercial use. The language of the agreement limits it for that purpose, and I'd like to read it to you. "In the event that redevelopment elects to construct as part of its initial construction of the North Building commercial space, in lieu of residential units currently designed, redevelopment may request, and the mayor is authorized, to issue additional TIF bond indebtedness in an amount based on the increased valuation attributable to the change to commercial space." In other words, there is no other purpose but for the use of a TIF for commercial space. In the event the residential use, you know, was followed, the city does not have the option of saying, oh, gosh, there's an authorized $5 million number, let's just spend the other $700,000 for something other than that reason. There's one and only one reason that you go from 4.3 to 5. The agreement says it's when you choose to build commercial space and not residential space.
So will you issue the bonds after you know the use? Will the amount be determined after the use is determined?
I would expect that to be the case, and Tom Houston is nodding affirmatively behind me as well.
Okay, thank you. John.
I guess looking at that additional $700,000, to what uses would that go to?
Commercial space is more expensive to build than residential space. The amount of investment by the developer is likely to be greater, and because it's greater, it generates more TIF. The purposes go back to site acquisition, site preparation, facade enhancement, landscaping, and streetscaping.
Okay, seeing no further questions, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Houston.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900, here in Lincoln on behalf of 48th and Layton 1 LLC. The redevelopment record with me today is Chris Erickson from City Ventures, who is the developer for this project. The three items on your agenda ask for your support. The two items in particular that I wish to address deal with the approval of the redevelopment agreement and the bond ordinance. What I've placed on the overhead is the site plan. And what, sole purpose of reviewing this again is that this project is, really represents phase one of the project, really focused on the center area with building one and two on the south and the north. Building one on the south is intended to be a five-story mixed-use development project. Building two on the north is intended to be a four-story mixed-use development. And the only variable that we have under either document in front of either the redevelopment agreement or the bond ordinance is, there is a chance, although it's a declining chance, but when we are negotiating the redevelopment agreement, there's a possibility to locate a large medical office user at this site. I think that window's probably closed at this point, so the redevelopment agreement will authorize the issuance of tax increment financing in the amount of 4.35 million, and likewise, the North Building will be four stories rather than five stories. So the other thing I just wanted to do is hit a couple of the high points of the redevelopment agreement. The redevelopment agreement really represents the investment of approximately $35 million by this redeveloper, 48th and Layton 1. The protest value for determining the sizing of the tax increment financing is at $24,365,000. The projected valuation that we have come up with based upon the 184 dwelling units and the approximately 28,000 square feet of retail would yield a tax increment financing sum of approximately 4.35 million, and that is the sum that is authorized under the redevelopment agreement and also in the bond ordinance. The redevelopment agreement uses, anticipates using those funds for site acquisition, not paying the entirety of that site acquisition, but roughly paying approximately 60% of that site acquisition cost. In addition, paying approximately $1 million for the site preparation. That will include bringing in additional fill because this, obviously, this site is in the dead man's run floodplain area, and additional floodplain work is required. The redevelopment agreement includes approximately $60,000 for streetscape improvements, approximately $186,000 for facade improvements, and lastly, some capitalized interest charges of approximately $450,000 based upon the timing of this project because of the fact that openly it's about two and a half years from right now until incremental taxes will be created by the project. As indicated by Director Landis, demolition is intended to happen this fall with vertical construction coming out of the ground next spring, and hopefully that the project will be completed then in 2018. The, as indicated by Director Landis, this site is actually identified in the comprehensive plan as the appropriate site for redevelopment of an underdeveloped commercial center, and I think this project really does it. I think if you look at the four corners of the comprehensive plan, this project hits all four corners. The intent of the comprehensive plan, likewise, the bond ordinance just will authorize the 4.35 million. I think it will probably limit it to that. It's unlikely that the office user will come to this site, and so the site will be a four-story building on the north rather than a five-story building on the north. With that, if you happen to answer any questions, and like I said, Chris Erickson is here to answer any questions if you have, may have of him.
John.
Yeah, two questions. Again, going back, you said there was the, you anticipate $35 million of assessed value, but there was a protest level below that of about 24.5?
We anticipate the total investment of the project costs is approximately $35 million. The protest value is the number that we have to utilize based upon the formulas adopted by the county assessor to project what the value would be of this project. And there's always a disconnect between project cost and valuation. There's always a disconnect. So we try to project what the county assessor will value it at, and then base our sizing of the tax increment financing on a realistic number. So that's the connection. We don't try to do a percentage or any discount. We really look at 184 units, how those would be valued, look at 28,000 square feet of retail, how that would be valued, and then aggregate that sum to be able to size the TIF over the 14-year capture period.
Okay, and then just the conclusion, so you're saying the 24.5 million would support the 4.3 million TIF?
Precisely. That's the math, yeah.
And the second question I have, maybe for Mr. Erickson, is on the construction, is this going to be a concrete structure, wood-stick structure?
Yeah, Chris Erickson, City Ventures, 905 Jones Street, Omaha. It's a combination. So all the commercial levels basically are probably steel structure, concrete podium with wood frame on top of them effectively.
So the residential will be wood frame?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item or these items?
Deb Andrews, 1235 A Street. Citizens are concerned about the increasing public support of private construction projects. There's little oversight of tax increment financed projects. How has that worked out for taxpayers over the long term? Are TIF projects required to be periodically reviewed? Are TIF and tax allocation bond support truly needed, or examples of government picking winners and losers? Are these projects routinely monitored and outcomes reported to determine if they are achieving the desired result? Is this evidence-based policymaking? Are there regular assessments of these taxpayer-backed programs? Do these projects force higher taxes on citizens or create new revenue? It was alarming to read in the paper about Verizon leaving Lincoln. Verizon, I know its tax incentives are different than TIF, but they had applied for eight to $12 million in tax incentives. It was reported it's unknown how much they actually received. Even the tax commissioner said that could mean the company met all requirements and received all its tax credits, or it could mean the company never followed through with the agreement. That's a lot of money for taxpayers. I just ask that with all the TIF agreements we've had recently, if you could report how those are working out for the taxpayer? Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify? Step to this mic, thank you. If you could let us know your name and address, and you can fill that out afterwards if you'd like.
My name is Richard Horverson, 1163 11 Immerness Road. And actually, I kind of thought maybe Landis would be dressed as Obi-Wan today. You listen to smooth, you know, even spaced voice, you almost expect a breakout. These are not the droids you want. And this is kind of appropriate for Halloween, too. The developer gets the treat, $5 million. We get the trick of having our taxes raised. I kind of agree with the other lady there that there is a lot of TIF going on, and of course, every time you TIF, that's less tax revenue for that year, or the coming years, for 15 years. And like she says, part of the law says this has to be granted only if the project will not be done without it. And I kind of find it hard to believe that the developer wouldn't take this project if they didn't have TIF. I mean, that's what they do. I mean, they're not going to sit home, but again, sometimes it's pretty laid out, pretty explicit how, like I say, it's blighted, but we really don't hear much in the paper or in these hearings about how if they don't have the TIF, it won't get done. So, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Applicant, would you like to, the applicant like to speak again, rebuttal?
The only thing I'd like to mention is that, yeah, tax increment financing is monitored very closely by the city of Lincoln. There's a process by which the developer has to certify that the costs were incurred and they have to be eligible costs, for strict compliance with the community development law. And this project is a good example of the demonstration of the BUTF test because it would not happen without tax increment financing. The site preparation costs and the other infrastructure costs as a part of the project just would not, would make it cost prohibitive for the project to go forward. And yes, the developer would not be in front of you without the tax increment financing component of the project. They'd be looking at other opportunities in other cities. So I think where we usually handle that is in the
handle that is in the amendment to the redevelopment plan when we consider the cost-benefit analysis. That's where the analysis of the BUT four really occurs, and that's included in the resolution. So that's all I had.
Trent has a question for you, I think.
Tom, the developers running that five-million-dollar cost through the TIF bond and repaying themselves over the fifteen-year period with their with their property tax payment?
Correct. Yeah. There's no taxpayer dollars involved directly. It's 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 the developer really what the city does, the issue, the city will issue a four-point-three-five-million-dollar tax increment financing indebtedness, which allows the developer to finance it.
Yeah, and they continue to pay the base rate of what the property was worth and assessed at before with any increases that might happen, with any reevaluation that might happen.
Correct.
Thank you.
I would just add to that, that this project truly would not be possible without tax increment financing. And I think if you really look at the neighborhood over the over the long period of time and the limited amount of private investment that really has gone into that neighborhood, I would suggest to you that had you not blighted these neighborhoods, this truly would not happen. When we purchased the site, we didn't expect to have to address a large vacant, excuse me, vacancy like this so quickly. And we would be in quite the pinch, frankly, if if it wasn't an option to build this new project. And the neighborhood would be in a difficult situation as well, because if if we didn't have tax increment financing available to us to be able to execute this project, it truly would have just remained with high B. And in that case, that that site would have just continued to to go downhill over the years. We would have done our best to maintain it and keep it up. But effectively, without without the shot in the arm, the ability to overcome the steep financial hurdles associated with not just this site, but urban redevelopment in general, this project wouldn't have happened without your support. So we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other staff questions before we move on? Teresa, please call the next item.
That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Public hearing resolutions. Item twenty-two is amending the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Regulations and Standards to increase fees for required services to business and industry introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Trent and seconded by Carl. Discussion. All right. Please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Fellers?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-three is the report of claims against the city for October first through the fifteenth, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd move motion to amend number one, which amends this and removes the regio claim from the allowed or settled claims.
Second.
Okay. The motion to amend number one moved by John, seconded by Trent. Discussion on that motion. Right. Please call the roll on the motion.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And now on the main motion, please, Teresa.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then is item twenty-four, the labor contract with LCEA, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-five is the resolution to declare the official intent of the city to reimburse certain expenses from the proceeds of the city's water revenue bonds for expenditures related to improvements to the city's water system, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion. Just want to say how important these water infrastructure projects are for our city, just for in terms of maintaining an adequate water supply going into the future and supporting the growth of our city, but also hedging against times of drought like we've seen in the recent past. So glad to see this intention being approved. Please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Public hearing ordinances, second reading, are items twenty-six through thirty. Ordinances, third reading, item thirty-one, street name change one six zero zero one, renaming a portion of Pine Lake Road, generally located east of the intersection of South Seventy-Fifth Street and Pine Lake Road to Archer Lane, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion to amend?
Yes.
The motion is to change the name from Archer Lane to Archer Place.
Moved by Carl and seconded by Roy. Discussion.
Call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And now on the main motion?
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then is item thirty-two, change of zone one six zero two five, application of Jane Bauer for a change from AG Agricultural to AGR Agricultural Residential on property generally located at South Sixtieth and Whitstruck Road, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Jane. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Our resolutions on first reading are items thirty-three through thirty-nine. We have no ordinances on first reading.
Madam Chair, I'd move for adjournment and also wishing everyone a safe and eventful Halloween.
Second.
Seconded by Trent.
We got to have some spookiness.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes. Happy Halloween, everyone. We are adjourned.
Carried, seven to zero.